All right, I guess it's time to start our meeting. Um, I would like to call a order, the Sparks Planning Commission meeting for November 21st, 2013. Can I have a roll call?
Here.
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 Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Camerota?
Here.
Assistant City of Kansas County?
Yeah.
City Planner Armando Alba?
Yeah.
Okay, um, next item is public comment. Um, anything that you want to speak, action item will be tonight, or anything of general comments, or you can speak specifically when we actually get to the item. So, does anyone like to speak? Okay, let's go on to the next thing, approval of the agenda. Motion approved?
Aye.
Have a first and second, all four?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Passes. Um, next thing, approval, approval of the minutes?
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Got a first and second, um, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes? Okay, um, announcements? Any announcements?
We don't have any, we didn't tell you.
Okay, thank you, informational items?
Yes.
All right, let's go on to, I guess, our items here is, we have a public hearing on two items. First item, um, PCN 12-0-14, Zozak. Staff presentation?
It was lower than I expected, sorry.
It's a little low, huh? You want to go ahead, change?
Planning Commissioners, I'm Karen Malvey, Senior Planner. Tonight, we are doing a review and consideration on, impossible action on two items, for this one particular item. The first item is a master plan amendment to change the land use designation from public institutional to a new land use called mixed residential. This is a map of the Kylie Ranch North project. I have dashed around the area that we're talking about tonight, which is 12 acres. Our second item in this application tonight is an amendment to the final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Two. The recorded handbook for Phase Two are also referred to as Village 35, consists of 12 acres and was recorded in 2006. The proposed amendments in the handbook change the standards to reflect residential development, including such things as architecture standards, landscaping, and site design. Before you tonight, I handed out a revised table 1-1, which will be replacing on page 1-9 in the handbook with this new page. I will discuss this in more detail later. The applicant was requesting 162 units, um, instead of the original 288 units. The master plan amendment can be found in conformance with the regional plan and also the Sparks master plan. Village 35 is located, as you can see, centrally within the Kylie Ranch North project. The surrounding area is not developed at this time, and Kylie Ranch master plan for this area is a mix of land uses with the intent for the whole project to provide a jobs-housing balance. Especially if this site is developed, it would provide, as assisted living, it would provide some jobs, meeting that intent. The mixed-use residential will offer housing in the central of the Kylie Ranch North, which is consistent or convenient with, to the future commercial, medical campus, and business park uses. The proposed use could potentially provide a different type of housing than has been previously proposed within the plan development, especially if it was developed as assisted living. The handbook standards regulate the site design, building architecture, height, setbacks, landscaping, and infrastructure improvements. The Phase Two handbook amendment proposes different land use than was approved in the tentative handbook. The revised plan maintains the integrity of the plan by proposing these land use designations in an area surrounded by arterials, and possibly supports the job-housing balance, as I stated earlier. It's a staff's opinion that the final draft handbook, or this amendment, could potentially vary three to five of the final criteria, and, which is for the determination of compliance of the final handbook with the tentative-approved handbook. It varies the ratio of residential to non-residential uses. It does reduce the common open space, but only by half an acre, and could increase the total ground coverage of the buildings, along with increasing permitted height. Based on these findings, staff determined that this amendment should have a public hearing. On Tuesday, a memo was handed out to you, to the Planning Commission, by KM2 Development, expressing their issues and concerns regarding this proposed amendment. Applicant has met with, has met with K2, KM2, I always get that backwards, and has come to the resolution on such issues. I handed out to you before the meeting, a revised table, and I've highlighted, and if you need, I can zoom in, um, some of the issues that have been changed. The first one that they are proposing, as I mentioned, they are proposing, um, to change it to 162 units, as opposed to 288 units. This being that, um, the applicant owns Village 38, which is this village right here, and what he's proposing to do is, um, the maximum allowed units on Village 38 was 272 units, and the tentative map for that village is actually 110 units. So that gives a balance of 162 units. So what he's proposing is to transfer that balance of 162 units to his property in Village 35. The next item on the table that has been revised is, inadvertently, we missed putting in the table that there's a potential on the school site of 294 units. So we have revised that, just to make sure that that's accounted for, and, for any future development also. This table also reflects some corrections or changes in the footnotes. Number four is discussing the open space, and, um, changing the, explaining that the PI, only a half an acre of that, is now in the open space requirement. We went back and did some research, looking at the tentative handbook and some of the other handbooks that have been approved, and discovered that the PI was not, the 12 acres was not totally included in the open space. It was actually, if I remember, 3.6 acres, and not the whole 12, or 17, actually. Um, because this PI is only a portion of the PI property, is actually a total of 17 acres. There'll be a remaining piece of about five acres of PI, if this, if you approve this master plan amendment tonight. Based on the master plan, oh, the other item that was added in the table, I'm sorry, um, is, there was a question on footnote six, and what that meant, and what the intent was, that it would only be, if you're, if it gets developed as assisted or senior housing with a common kitchen facility, then those units would not count towards the 162 units. It's only, um, if it's actually a multifamily or a single-family project, then the, then the 162 units come into play. Based on the master plan and PD findings, as discussed in my staff report and also in my presentation tonight, staff is recommending approval. I would also like to remind the Planning Commission that there are two motions in this project tonight. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, um, any questions, Commissioners, before I ask the applicant?
I have a question. Um, Karen, on this, item number seven, the 294 units within the school site, if the school is not built?
Yeah.
Is, is there a timeframe on that? Or is that, will that be available until the school, the Washoe County School System decides whether they are going to use that or not?
It was until the school decides if they want the, the sites. There's actually two school sites in the, in the plan development, so, and...
So, so somewhere down the road, uh, there, there are additional sites that would be available, the school decides to use it, but if the school never decides, then they would set...
Then the, the developers of Kylie Ranch have the right to, to develop those as residential.
Whenever that is?
Yes.
But the Washoe, the school system would have to affirmatively say, "We don't want that site anymore?"
That's correct.
Okay.
Or the two sites, yes.
The two sites, I understand.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let me call the applicant, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and I have with me tonight, the applicant, Carlos Vasquez. And, uh, I want to thank Karen for working with us, uh, for a number of months on the details regarding, uh, the handbook, the architectural standards, and, uh, buffering and requirements. We worked quite hard on that, back and forth, and, and came to a, a nice agreement on that. And, uh, I also want to thank KM2 for, um, meeting with us and, uh, working out their concerns with us. So, with that, um, if there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think Karen, um, gave a good presentation on the overview.
Okay, questions?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Melissa, I have one. When we met with, um, KM2 Development, there's one question on here about the application states that the right-of-way landscaping maintenance will be the city of Sparks. Who's, who will take care of that?
I believe that the city agreed to that, and, uh, there are staff members to address that.
That would be the landscaping that's in the median. It would, the other landscaping that would be on, like, either side of the street, that would actually be in prior owners, private ownership. So, that when it says in the handbook that it was for the right-of-way, it's referring to the, any landscaping that would be in the median.
In the medians?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and all the other, um, four major items were settled?
Yes, and I believe Scott Christie's here from KM2, and, and you can, he can affirm that as well.
Okay, is Scott here? I don't know.
He's going to be speaking, I think.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Melissa, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? This one? Okay, let's open the public hearing, this is public hearing, um, we've got some comments.
Yes, we have one, that's Scott Christie. Please come forward.
Perfect timing.
Good evening, Commissioners, uh, I am Scott Christie, I represent KM2 Development and Rising Tides adjacent property owners. Um, I'd like to begin first by also thanking the applicant and, uh, and Melissa, uh, we did request a meeting, and, uh, they took the time to meet with us yesterday, and did address all of our concerns. Um, we are in support of the project. Um, I just wanted to, at this time, confirm a couple of items, um, one of which, you just confirmed the landscaping maintenance. Also, we, we had a question on the 65-foot max building height, um, after speaking with the applicant and, and their plans and what they're going to do. Uh, we are okay with that. We did request a landscape buffer to the east, adjacent to our residential, um, I think that'll probably be addressed at the, uh, cyclone review stage, um, but we would like, something done over there. Also want to confirm, as Karen already did, that the PI, uh, land use was not included in the overall open space, and I think everybody's in confirmation that that's the case. And we're okay with the density, so, uh, yeah, we look forward to a good project, and we're in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, does anybody else want to speak? Okay, let's close the public. Um, all right, Commissioners, any questions, comments?
I have one more, just informational question, maybe Karen, I'm not sure, who, but, um, in the, in the, um, potential, uh, group assisted living facility that, that is potentially out there, there's mention made of limited gaming, with less than 15 slots. Um, and, I'm just curious, is that sort of automatic with, uh, assisted living, or, uh, retirement communities, or whatever might be in there? Or is that something special that's being asked for? Are you aware?
I've never seen that before. Um, I don't know if Carlos wants to address that.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, can you state your name, and, and speak to it?
Yes, Carlos Vasquez, Zozak Land, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. Um, Commissioner, it, it's not an automatic. Um, it is, however, a growing trend in active senior care, what we're seeing down in, in Las Vegas, and in some of the areas in Arizona, that have Indian gaming where these pieces are put. It's not a key cornerstone to our project, it's just an added amenity that we thought we wanted to have the ability to bring forward, if the market continues to develop with that. Limited gaming is 15 only, it can never be more than 15, it can only be video machines, it can't be tables, can't be anything beyond that. It's low denominations, essentially, in our project, it'll be penny slots. Uh, but there, the limited gaming designation through gaming control, I just went through and, and got this license at another project, uh, it's, it's, it's a very complicated process to get the license. It allows you a maximum of 15, but you can't limit it below that. Our, our plans are actually for six, but under the, the license we would be getting does allow for 15, so that's why we put it in for 15.
So this would be, the, obviously, it's legal in the sense that's written in here, and the gaming commission would regulate it.
Yep.
Um, would this be the first in this part of the state, if that, if that comes to pass?
No, I, I understand there's, uh, there is a pen, and I don't know this for an absolute fact, but there's a pending gaming application for one in Washoe County. Um, yeah, I don't know which one it is, but when my license was going through, um, I was told that that was a, another pending license.
Thank you.
Carlos, real quick, so, this would be located inside the residence, living area?
Yeah, our, our project is designed as pods, and the way we design this, this came out of a bunch of us having issues with our, our parents and grandparents, and, uh...
Now, wait a minute, oh, yeah.
I'm not making any statement to that, Mr. Lee. Um, way we've designed this is, is each, each pod, if you think of it as a building...
Do you want me to get the quick one?
Could you? That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me walk you through this.
That'd be great.
We're very proud of this project. Um, each pod, they're individual buildings, is designed to be a neighborhood, and every floor is designed to mimic the street. And we had some clinical psychologists help us work with how the floors work, as you age, your mind has certain tendencies. One of the things that, 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 if you, if you work in this, and we, we've raised a REIT for this, we're building 11 of these around the east, the west coast. As you age, you, you go into these facilities, and you age out of facilities. So over the, a period of time, if you're unlucky enough to, to have health issues, you start to slowly lose your social fabric, because you age out of a facility. You're there long enough to build friends, you lose all your friends at your house, you move into this facility, you make a new social group. You age out of that, you lose that group, you start over, eventually, people end up isolated. Not all the time, but a great deal of the time. Um, we wanted to build something that, that you never moved. So each of our units is designed with memory care, that's, there's specific electronic devices that do that in each unit, and it's designed to where you move into your street, and you never have to leave. As you age, services are brought to you. As your needs change, the services are brought to you. Everything has common kitchens, everything is designed with these different pods, you can see how the pods go around, every one of those has a different name, a different theme, and different architecture. Every night, those central dining areas have different themed foods, so you can go to any of those seven restaurants, if you want to think of it as that, and that's how we're building them inside of that, these are not cafeterias. It's a restaurant, and a bar, and the whole thing that you're used to in your real life. Um, each unit does have a small kitchen, but the reality is, is people use that for a period of time, and then they age out of their kitchen, and then they're eating down, or food is being brought up to them. Uh, every floor has a food prep area, every floor has attendants that are within, this was a really important thing to us, every attendant is within 30 steps of a door. So, your door, even though it's built on a, on a donut, feels isolated, but the attendants are in the middle, and they're 30 steps from every single door. Um, we've designed some interesting things with cardiac care, a lot of times when somebody is having a cardiac event, a change of temperature will trigger it, so we have enclosed areas for the ambulances to go in, they're temperature controlled. Um, we've built in all kinds of neat little tricks to this. But the gaming is a very small amenity to that, I understand that that's going to draw a lot of attention, um, and it, and it has, it really is six machines sitting in a bar, in a restaurant-like environment. And it is only in one pod. So it's not like there would be 15 in every pod, there's really six, and in one that's themed for that. Um, I mean, it, it, it's not inconceivable to think if, if, you know, our, our guests want more, that we would put a couple more in other pods, um, but I, I doubt that, because of the way we're theming this. But there can never be more than 15 under NRS for the whole project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, again, like your two motions that we're doing on this thing. First one is a master plan amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on the master plan amendment. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for certification of a master plan amendment for PCN 12014, based on findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings that's set forth in the staff report.
Second.
I have a first and second, any more comments? Okay, ready for vote? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. Okay, second one, um, is final handbook amendment.
I'll, I'll make that motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council of PCN 12014 for a final handbook amendment based on the facts supporting the findings, PD1 through PD21, as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Have a first and second, any more comments? Okay, call for the vote, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Again, also pass, um, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're ready to go on to the second one, and it seems like quite a few are here for. All right, um, next, next project, uh, PCN 12035, Sparks Legends Development. Tim, you're up here already, you're ready for presentation?
Hope so. Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. Uh, before you tonight is a special use permit request from Sparks Legends Development to allow for the construction of a, about 180,000 square foot, uh, big box retailer in the Legends at Sparks Marina. Uh, the proposed tenant is Walmart. The, uh, site is located in the northwest portion of the development. Those of you familiar with the, uh, with the project, may recall that the, uh, this was the area that had anticipated on, uh, being the, um, luxury motor coach dealer. Um, because it was anticipated on being a luxury motor coach dealer, and, um, the, that's what the handbook contemplated, and the site plans inside the handbook, included in the handbook, also showed the dealership, uh, and now the, the desires to, uh, bring in another, um, large box retailer, a special use permit is required, specifically to look at the impacts. The retail use is a permitted use with, within the entire plan development, um, and so, again, staff's focus in this particular case was mitigating any of the identified impacts, and ensuring, uh, compliance with the handbook, um, with regard to, to the overall project. One of the, uh, more significant impacts is obviously traffic. Um, a traffic analysis was completed by the developer, uh, that analysis was actually completed a little more than a year ago. Um, since that time, uh, staff has, has worked with the applicant on, uh, the improvements that we are going to recommend, and have conditioned within this, um, um, within this application. Um, since then, the applicant has, uh, worked with Walmart, um, on the financing for those Staff is requiring that Marina Gateway Drive be widened from its current configuration of, uh, two travel lanes, one north, one south, to four travel lanes, two north, two south. Um, there will be, uh, turn pockets, so, um, some may refer to it as a five-lane facility. Uh, the right-of-way, um, we believe the right-of-way is there, there is sufficient right-of-way to widen the road to accommodate this. Um, if you've, if you've driven down the road, you'll notice that there are meandering sidewalks through there, and some landscaping, that will all be pushed to the, the perimeter. Um, but you'll still have those facilities, it'll, uh, have to meet all of the, um, improvement standards, bike lanes, et cetera. Associated with the widening of Marina Gateway are also capacity improvements to the intersections of East Lincoln and Marina Gateway, as well as East Prater and Marina Gateway. Um, specifically on the corner of, um, on the southwest corner of the intersection of East Prater and Marina Gateway, there will be a protected right turn, um, in front of the Maverick, um, that was approved, um, not too long ago. Um, so you'll see, um, a dedicated right turn lane as you're heading eastbound on Prater. Uh, and then, the, um, another improvement is on North McCarran Boulevard, as you're heading southbound on North McCarran, and you're at Prater, looking to make a left turn onto eastbound, East Prater, that left-hand turn pocket will be lengthened. Um, it is a, it is a single left turn lane, and that pocket will be lengthened, um, along with this project. And then the last improvement is, um, the completion of Windsurfer Drive. Windsurfer Drive has been, um, an uncompleted city road for a number of years now. The applicant is proposing to utilize Windsurfer as the primary truck access, um, to, to the, the Walmart site. And so staff is requiring that the developer improve Windsurfer Drive. Another issue that concerned staff was the access to the property. Um, the intersection of Marina Gateway and East Lincoln is the primary access into the site. Originally, the developer proposed to have that access come, um, straight in, and, and come right in front of the store. Staff was concerned about vehicular and pedestrian conflicts there, and, um, so we worked very closely with the developer on, uh, the site plan that you see here today, which actually takes the traffic, and moves it to the east, towards the, the rear of the, uh, parking field, to minimize those, uh, pedestrian vehicular conflicts. You'll also notice that there are parking areas, both on the north and south side of the proposed store. Generally, in front of the Walmarts, there's a larger parking field, I think due to the configuration of this particular parcel, that some parking had been relocated to the, the, both the north and south side of the store. In concept, I think staff is supportive of this proposed site plan, as we move forward into the building permit phase. Naturally, there are going to be tweaks and, and some minor changes, but in concept, um, staff is supportive of this particular site plan. The truck access, as I mentioned, is, uh, would be off of, uh, East Lincoln and Windsurfer. The trucks would come down Windsurfer, and then access through here. They will not come further down Windsurfer, uh, towards Bay Shore Drive. Uh, they will turn into this area here. The store has, uh, two separate loading docks, doors that face north, and doors that face south. The idea being that as the trucks come in, they can either make a U-turn, and then back in, or proceed along the rear of the building to this area, back in, and then when it's, um, when, when leaving the site, they can come up, make a, a U-turn, and come back. So it keeps the, the truck traffic out of the parking field, it keeps it, uh, away from the Legends Bay, George Ferris, um, intersection. It's important to note that the handbook restricts delivery hours. Deliveries can only be made between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. There is no deliveries permitted outside of those hours. There's also no truck idling permitted as well. Um, I know that there are some residents that are concerned about the noise impacts, and, uh, those are requirements that are already included in the handbook. They're also placed as conditioned, uh, or placed as conditions, just to, um, uh, demonstrate the importance of, of the, the concern. In the study session the other day, we, uh, had talked about the, the buffer, and the wall, and the separation. I asked the applicant to, uh, provide us with some cross-sections showing what that would look like, and if I could have the computer, please, Janet. So on the overhead here, um, you've got the Walmart site plan, um, in this area here is, uh, cross-section A, cross-section B, cross-section C. And so these are the cross-sections here, so you can see, um, from this existing residence here... So you can see from this existing residence here, you've got about nineteen feet or so to the property line. This cross section shows a six foot wall right at the property line. Staff will have to check the handbook and make sure that that is acceptable. I do believe that there's a requirement that there be landscaping on the residential side of the wall, so it is entirely likely that that wall will have to move up the slope. But it is a six foot wall and then the slope goes up to the actual pad of the Walmart. This is an enclosed storage area where, think of it as a, as a large trash enclosure area where they are proposing to store their cardboard palletized materials. And then you have the truck dock here and then the auto center is also located on this particular end of the building. But as you can see, the overall distance from the, from the truck dock to the property line is about sixty-six feet and then another fifty feet to the building. I think what's going to be most important is the landscape buffer in this area here. We'll have to take a look at the landscaping as the applicant moves forward again into the building permit process. We'll have the ability to look more closely at the landscape plan to ensure that the vegetation there is adequate enough to help screen and mitigate some of those noise impacts. This is cross section C, which is again, a little bit further to the north.
B.
I'm sorry, B. And as you can see, the, this is the truck dock well here.
Right.
There will be a screen wall here that I believe will be in the neighborhood of fourteen feet high, so it'll screen any of the trailers that are there for loading and unloading But you can see that the loading dock area is actually set back from the previous cross section. So it's actually set back. If we go back to cross section A here, you see the loading dock area is actually farther to the north.
Could I ask real fast, because I'm trying to understand this? B is essentially where the apartments start?
Yeah, cross section B is going to be right.
Cross section hits right to the.
Right here.
And that would go right to the south part of the apartments and we're looking at.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that, that area of the apartments is a parking field.
Right. So let's go back to that. I'm sorry.
So you see that we have the retaining wall adjacent to the apartments. You have Windsurfer. You've got another retaining wall here. This retaining wall will be as tall as about eight foot tall in some areas. And then you'll have the six foot screen wall on top of that. And then you have the rear of the building itself. And then there was a, you can see the site analysis that was done. So, you know, a six foot person on the sidewalk here has a sight line of about the middle of that, that wall there. And then you can see that the screen dock wall is, is right in here with landscaping in front of it as well. And then this is cross section C, which is again, is farther to the north. And you've got similar situation where you've got the landscaping, the truck dock area. This is where their trash compactor is in this area. So you can see that it's screened and landscaped. You can see here that the retaining wall is actually lower than in cross section B.
Right.
In this particular case, this is to demonstrate the, the actual distance of the existing apartments to the proposed rear of the building. You can see that's close to one hundred and eighty feet away. There are a series of garages that are located in between the existing apartments and Windsurfer. And then obviously, you can see the sight lines again. Somebody standing on the sidewalk adjacent to the apartments might see the top of the Typically, when we bring, or when projects come into this development, we bring elevations before the planning commission as a general business item. Because this is a special use permit, we're asking that these elevations be included in this approval tonight. You can see that the. Get to the right. There we go. That's not what we want. It's a foreign computer to me. The, the building is, has been nicely articulated. It stays in the same architectural style as the rest of the Legends Shopping Center. The, the brick the applicant is proposing is a structural brick. I believe there are two different types of that structural brick. So the, the building will actually be constructed of the brick and not be a concrete tilt up with, with the veneer on the exterior. Their stone incorporated into this as well as stucco. They've met the landscaping requirements. Everything around the perimeter of the building appears to be screened adequately, meeting all of the standards that are included in the handbook. And again, staff would recommend that this be included in the, in the approval tonight should you choose to approve the, the project. One thing to point out is the area out, sorry Janet, overhead please. Another thing to point out is the pad out in front of the store adjacent to the roundabout. That is an undeveloped pad, so in the future, there may be some additional development that goes there. I think you heard at the study session the other day that it could be a five thousand square foot retail type, type building, so. But for the time being, that will be an undeveloped portion of, of the overall pad area. The, the plan here shows a roundabout at the George Ferris Legends Bay intersection. This roundabout is a requirement of the Olympia Gaming Project, not a requirement of this particular project. Currently, this road is now open and this intersection is stop controlled. And the construction of that roundabout will come when the Olympia property is developed and is not a part of this approval. So you just want to make sure that that's clear as well. Lighting will be similar to what is out there today. Same light standards, light fixtures. It'll all be consistent, meet the same standards as far as the photometric plan, zeros at the lot lines. I think it's four point five average max on the, on the lights in the parking lot. So it won't be too bright out there, but it'll, there will be enough light for, for safety purposes. With that, I will conclude my presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the project and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before, before we get the applicant, anybody got any questions at this point or later?
I have a question. That, that retail.
On the point there that you were talking about, Tim? Who controls what will happen? I know that they would have to come to the city, but who controls that in the sense of deciding when and what is going to be brought, if anything, there?
I will defer to the applicant on that, on that particular question.
All right, thank you. Second question, I sort of asked this question a little bit on Tuesday at the study session, but the, moving to the, using the whole right of way and moving to the four lanes on the, on the section between Prater and Lincoln, will that eliminate any of the potential uses that, that were, were at least possibly planned for that area on either side?
Eliminate, no.
Okay.
I will say that part of staff's rationale in requiring the road to be widened from two to four lanes was to protect some of that existing capacity that is out there today for those adjacent property owners.
That's owned by separate entities?
The, correct. The, I believe the Mankeys own the property on the west and then the city has a property on the east as well as Jigery's and whoever that third property owner is.
Thank you.
And technically, Chairman Berber, the, it's not the city that owns that one parcel that's the redevelopment.
It's redeveloped?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions at this point before?
Go back to that cross section A.
A, real quick. Handbook has a setback of seventy-five feet between the nearest residential structure and, and in my notes here, it says any building. So from that residence, I think you'd have to scroll it up a little bit. So that, that first residence there to the, I, I just can't see that far. The enclosed. Enclosed structure, is that considered a building and what's the feet measurement of that?
The enclosed storage.
Storage, yeah.
Is, technically, I would say it's a structure. It's not going to be a building. There's not, it's not a roof. Think of it as a, as a fence, if you will. The, the handbook requires that any buildings on the Legends property be located a minimum of seventy-five feet, I believe it is, away from the residence itself. It's not the property line. It is the actual physical residence itself, the residential structure itself. So you've got the sixty-six feet plus the nineteen feet there, so they do meet that seventy-five foot setback.
So you're not, that, that a closed storage is not considered a building?
Correct.
Any other questions at this point? All right, let's call for the applicant to come up. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chairmen Spurber, members of the planning commission, thank you very much. My name is Barry Shanahan. I'm the Executive Vice President of Development for RED Development. We are the managing general partner of Sparks Legend Development. I appreciate your time this evening to hear this application. I want to begin by thanking you for that time and also for thanking staff who we worked with to prepare this applica, this application for you. Specifically, Tim Thompson, John Martini, Armando Anelias, and Neil Crutz have worked and participated extensively in a lot of discussion to get us to this point. They have been great to work with and we appreciate working with them. In addition, I'm joined tonight by Frank Bedard of Odyssey Engineering, who is my civil engineer. If you have questions, Frank is available to help us with some technical questions if you have them. And also Dennis McGovern, the General Manager of Sparks Legends Development, the outlets at Sparks, is also here with me tonight if you have questions regarding the broader operation. Before I talk about the plans with Walmart for just a minute, let me just take a second to give you a little bit of an overview of the project update overall. As you all know, building Legends during the tough years of the economic downturn has been quite challenging. We are rewarded today with an increasingly vibrant retail development at the Legends. We'll continue our efforts to make sure that we complete the project and to bring all the final elements of what we plan online. We believe that the Legends project is proving itself to be a very powerful retail draw for the region's visitors and for everyone who lives nearby. Our goal is for Legends to become a one-stop destination for all your shopping, dining, and entertainment needs. We're very pleased with the progress that we've made with retailers that have joined the Legends roster over the last eighteen months. Names like TJ Maxx, Old Navy Outlet, Rue Twenty-One, Styles for Less, Down East, and very recently, Buffalo Wild Wings comprise a total of fifty-five thousand square feet of new tenants that have been added to the project in those last eighteen months. In addition, opening this month at the outlet at Sparks are Lids for Less, Famous Footwear Outlet, and literally today VF Outlet opened in the property. That's an additional thirty-five thousand square feet of retailers joining the Legends just this month. We're also proud to be the partner with Galaxy Theaters on bringing to northern Nevada their first IMAX theater. The state-of-the-art new theater complex will give locals and visitors a top-notch movie-going experience. And we're working with the Galaxy owners right now to finalize the grand opening date of that movie theater and working on the details of that. I can tell you at this point, early spring looks like the opening of the theater. We're quite excited with the construction. As you can see, it, it's a spectacular building and I think that will add a tremendous amount of energy and activity to the Legends project on the west side of the project. Now let's talk about Walmart. As Tim mentioned, Walmart has always been a part of our plans for the project and we are pleased that they have renewed their interest and have chosen Legends for an additional store location in this market. And really, it's great news for the city when a retailer wants to expand their presence in the city of Sparks and we're pleased that that's the case. Representatives of Walmart are here with me this evening and can answer questions that you might have specifically for them. I'd like to introduce Amelia McClear, who's the Director of Public Affairs and Government Relations. She is joined by Nick Berenka, who is the Store Manager of the Spanish Springs Supercenter. And Shad Vermish is their architect from BRR Architecture. On October twenty-second, with the participation of those individuals, RED hosted a neighborhood outreach meeting to discuss our proposed plans for the new Walmart store with the neighborhood. The neighborhood meeting was not a requirement, but we felt strongly that we wanted to ensure that those who would join us that evening were updated on our plans for this property. The meeting was attended by nearly thirty residents of the neighborhoods immediately west and northwest of the project. The staff members that I mentioned before attended the meeting. In addition, Councilman Ron Smith and Councilman Ed Lawson also attended the meeting. Overall, the feedback that we received from the residents that evening was very positive. We were encouraged to have received that feedback as we headed into this meeting with you all this evening. Tim Thompson has done an excellent job of reviewing the project in detail, so I won't repeat all of that. I do just want to emphasize so that the commission and the audience understand that the site that you see today is not the site that you will see in the future. Specifically, as you know, the eighteen acre site today slopes from Lincoln Boulevard down towards the Marina and there's a fall in the land. We will grade that site so that we have a more level site to develop and to build the store on. The existing screen fence that you see along the property line will be torn down during that grading process. When we're finished, the north end of the site, as, as Tim reviewed it with you where the truck entrance is, that portion of the site will be basically at grade with the prevailing grade of the street. As the road falls down towards the Marina, we'll keep the site level with that retaining wall system that Tim mentioned with the cross section analysis. And as you had pointed out, as you get near the south end of that street, the retaining wall itself will be approximately seven to eight feet in height based upon our preliminary grading studies that we have done at this point. Once the site is complete and that retaining wall is built and the site is level and we get ready to start the store construction, we will build a six foot screen wall at the rear of the property line to replace the fence that we've taken down. So on the north end of the property, you'll know that the, you'll have a basically a screen fence of about six feet in height, similar to what you see there today. As you head south on the property towards that south line, as you come nearer to the single-family residential district, you'll have a seven to eight foot retaining wall and on top of that retaining wall will be another screening fence of six feet. So I want the audience and the commission to understand that the screening element on that south end near that single family is greater in height than the six foot fence that is described on itself. The, I also want to mention just a second, the trash enclosure area that Tim mentioned on that south end of the property near the single-family residential. That's a masonry screen wall. I understand it's ten feet in height and the product that's stored in there is the pallet, the bundled cardboard that's earmarked for recycling and also the pallets that are used to unload and to load the trucks. That's not a wet garbage or any kind of an odor-producing kind of an area. The wet garbage goes into a compactor that on your site plan is in the north-facing truck seal on the north end of the property. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear. We believe that the combination of the retaining wall and the screen wall creates a very effective buffer for the neighborhood. And as you can see from the sight lines, much of the building in the rear of the property is hidden from a pedestrian sight line. Between the road and this new landscape buffer, as Tim mentioned, we'll also be installing a landscape buffer. The plant materials will work to not only enhance the streetscape, but also to soften the impacts of the screen walls so that visually, it's not just a fourteen foot wall that you're looking at on the south end. I want to take a second also to talk about deliveries for just a little bit. We've taken steps to try to mitigate the impact of deliveries on the property. We've taken steps to try to mitigate the impact of deliveries on the property. To begin with, the only access from Windsurfer for the project will be that northernmost drive that Tim pointed out to you. There's no other access into the property from Windsurfer to the south. Larger delivery vehicles, as Tim pointed out, will travel, will enter the property and travel between the building and the screen road. So they'll stay within that screen wall, that screened area, and they will travel to either the north dock or the south dock. As they arrive at those docks, they'll drive down, they'll back into the truck well, and the rear trailer that holds the merchandise of the store will go back against the building and go against the truck seal. So it's sealed into the building. At that point, the truck is turned off, the doors are rolled up, and the trailer and the merchandise is unloaded directly into the store. So there's not unloading onto the parking lots of the big delivery vehicles from Walmart. It goes straight into the store. As Tim mentioned, all retailers in the Legends project have deliveries limited to occurring only between the hours of seven a.m. and ten p.m. That also includes any other noise-producing type of activity, so snow removal, trash collection, parking lot sweeping, all those types of things. And as we pointed out, truck idling is also a restriction. As the trucks unload in the truck well, as Tim also mentioned, there is a very extensive screen wall right at the edge of the dock. So at the edge of that building, there is an additional buffer of sound, noise, and distraction right on that truck dock area itself. So if you think of this, it's really almost a three-tiered kind of a system. You have a screening wall, a large one at the dock, you have the driveway, you have an additional screening wall at the property line, and then along the outside edge of the property, you've got the landscaping that is offered to dress up the street and to also work as a sound attenuation as well. Altogether, we think that those systems work to mitigate the impacts on the adjacent residential neighborhood. I would also add that Walmart not only owns and manages its own distribution centers, but they own their delivery vehicles and drivers are Walmart associates. And this factor gives Walmart a very high degree of control of their store replenishment program, and they'll be aware of the rules and restrictions of the Legends project. Let me address the question relative to the outlet pad, because you raised that just earlier, so I'll touch on that right now. We have no user for that pad at this time. The arrangements between Walmart and ourselves would not permit the development of any type of a sit-down restaurant or a drive-through restaurant in that location, because there's not enough traffic in our arrangements to accommodate that. What we have done is we have looked at it and we believe that we can accommodate about a five-thousand-square-foot retail building should a user identify itself. Don't have anybody identified right now. We've got other projects, pads that are available within the projects that are a higher priority than that one. Our hope is that at some point in time, someone comes along and they, if they do, they would be governed by the same approval process that they ordinarily would have to, and they would be governed by the PD book and those types of things as well. So in conclusion, let me just say that we're very excited about the project and we feel that everyone really benefits from a fully realized and a completed project. We're back on the road to making that happen. I appreciate your hearing this application this evening and thank you for your time. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to have the Walmart representatives come up and answer any questions that you might have for them.
Thank you. Would you like something?
Yeah, I would. Should I stay for questions now or just wait until the presentation's kind of?
Either way, I mean.
I'm Amelia McClear, Public Affairs Director for Walmart. Just real quick, we are really excited for this project. You know, we've worked closely with Red and the city over the past year on making sure the traffic mitigation has worked out. But you know, we think our store can be part of the solution when it comes to folks who need a job or want a more affordable options close to where they live and work. You know, our current store in Sparks is over twelve miles away. We think this is a good second location for us. We're not planning on closing any stores here in the Reno-Sparks area. So we feel like this can be, this will be a great second store location for us. It's good retail synergy with the other shops there at the Legends. It's right off of the interstate, you know, capturing the tourists and the locals here. Two additional things that I'd like to highlight, one is our charitable giving here in the community. Nick's store currently gives away about ten thousand dollars per year in grants to local nonprofits and civic groups here in Sparks, including the Sparks Fire Department, Sparks Police Department, Spanish Springs High School, you know, those types of things. And this store will have its own charitable giving budget as well, so we look forward to doing even more here in Sparks. And as far as jobs, we anticipate about three hundred new jobs will be created at this store location. It'll be jobs of all types, from your entry-level positions to store management. And we also plan to open a local hiring center near the store site here in Sparks about three months before the store opens, to make sure, you know, we can staff up and have the store ready for the grand opening. And just a few dates, you know, if you approve this project, we expect to go out to bid summer of 2014 and then be open summer of 2015. And you know, here with Shad and Nick and Barry, if you guys have any questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mary, I do. I know in the study session, I had asked Barry about Walmart going to close any other stores and he assured me, no. But I'd like to have you on record and you say it again. And we're not going to close any Walmart stores in Sparks.
Absolutely. On the record, we're not going to close any Walmart stores in Sparks.
All right, Mary, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Walmart stores and other stores?
No, no. This will be a new store for us. In fact, we opened a new store earlier this year in Garterville. So we really see the Northern Nevada market, it's a good market for us, and our customer response has been strong.
Thank you. Any other questions before I open public? All right, let's open the, open the public hearing. Let me see, Barbara?
Mr. Chairman, we have Bill Hillkey. If I have mispronounced your name, please correct me when you come to the stand.
Come on up, Bill. That's why I don't do the names. I do them wrong and everybody gets upset. Bar, though.
And you have three minutes.
Yes.
My name's Bill Hillkey. I'm a Sparks resident, actually have been since nineteen seventy-three, except for eighteen My issues that I have with this are more of a social concern than they are of a physical plant or anything else. And one of the things that I did this afternoon, I spent a lot of time on the Internet, finding studies, finding information, and trying to get some information that I could actually present to you in about three minutes. And that's not enough time. So what I'm really going to do is just point to two things. There have been numerous studies. Walmart's the most studied corporation in the world, simply because they're the largest corporation. And there isn't a facet of their operation that hasn't been studied. There hasn't been a facet of their operation that hasn't had a book written about it. And the majority of those books are negative, as are the majority of the studies. And one of the things that they find is that when Walmart goes into a shopping center or into an area, it negatively affects the wage structure of the surrounding stores. It particularly affects grocery stores, because in order to compete, the grocery stores have to lower their wages, they reduce their hours, and they cut back on their benefits. I've brought these, I'm leaving with you. It kind of pretty much compiles everything. The other thing is, this is a two-hundred-employer Walmart store. This study was done in two thousand and five. There's a compilation that was done in two thousand and ten that actually included this study. It says the same thing, it's just a lot wordier. But what they found, and this was done by the Democratic staff, the House Committee on Education and Workforce, thirty-six thousand dollars a year for free or reduced school lunches, assuming that fifty families of employees qualify. And this is the effect that a Walmart store has on a community as far as additional taxes going out to employees. Forty-two thousand a year for Section Eight rental assistance, assuming that three percent of the store employees qualify. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for federal tax credits and deduction for low-income families, assuming that fifty employees are heads of households with a child and fifty employees are married with two children. A hundred and eight thousand dollars a year for the additional federal contribution to state's children's health insurance programs, assuming that thirty employees and average of two children qualify. A hundred thousand dollars a year for additional Title I expenses, assuming fifty families with two children qualify. Nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for the additional cost of low-income energy assistance. The total's four hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's pretty much across the board across the country.
Have you got, or you can finish up?
I did.
A little more. You did it, right? At the time, thank you.
Any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Do I give these to her?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you.
Jim Shepherd? Welcome, Mr. Shepherd, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Steam Staff. My name is Jim Shepherd. I live in Ward Two up here in Sparks, and I think this development should not be approved. Legends was developed to be a different shopping experience. Supposed to be an upscale, but now it's starting to turn into a lot of similar mall structures with a bunch of big boxes, and where's our special experience here for Sparks? Walmart will even cheapen that experience. There are already nine Walmarts in this area. There's plenty of capacity available. We just don't need to mess up this beautiful center we've got. It'll be in direct competition, it'll hurt stores like Target especially. It'll also hurt a lot of the specialty stores. Walmart has shown predatory practices against small merchants. I know, because I was one, and was basically put out of business by Walmart. The expected closure of some of the stores at Legends and some in the area from McCarran East will occur. Attendant loss of tax revenues, employment, and wages. If approved, Walmart should not get any tax credits or help from the Starbonds. They should pay the full tax, sales tax revenue, because there will be a drop in collections from around the rest of the city. If approved, the parcel should be made to Special Economic District. It's something different, with a mandatory minimum wage substantially above the existing, say fifteen dollars an hour like they're doing at Sea-Tac in Washington, requiring of health insurance for full-time and part-time employees. This would help minimize the impact of the city and county services in providing help to the employees. Basically, what we're saying to them is they must be a good neighbor and be able to come in here and work with everybody else. They aren't. So really wish that this project be scrapped. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome, Mr. Kennon, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners, my name is Brian Kernan.
Kernan, sorry about that.
I live at thirteen eighty-three Cochran Drive, which is about three-quarter mile north of the site, and I'm opposed to the Walmart store. We already have one big-box discount retailer in the center in Target, and Walmart offers no product or goods that are not immediately available in our neighborhood from other stores. The impact, the traffic impact that was mentioned, the significance of the difference between the traffic impact of a luxury motor coach store and Walmart is huge, and there's no discussion about the traffic impact on Prater where no improvements are planned. I would like to remind everybody that the Legends development was pitched by the developer, the mayor, and city council as a destination center with a majority, or a certain percentage of the retailers, to be stores that were not available in our region at that time. This was the basis of the city proposing the TID District and seeking the Starbond financing. I'm concerned that in a desperate effort to meet the bond obligation, we're willing to let any retailers in the Legends development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Maniki Jr.? Welcome, Mr. Maniki, you have three minutes.
Bill Maniki Jr. Just got a couple of questions for you. Right across-
And Bill, can you say, are you representing?
Actually, we own the property adjacent to the other side where the Sparks Marine RV Park is.
Right.
Just kind of curious as far as the deliveries for those trucks coming in, that's directly across from our place. I'm just kind of curious to see how many trucks a day are planned to come in there.
And you're talking to your RV?
Yeah, our Sparks, the Sparks Marine RV Park. Then the other deal I heard mentioned is on Prater Way, they're going to, they want to do some improvements on that. That looks like that's going to touch into the Mavericks Station on the other end, which that's also our property in that corner, and I'm trying to see where that's all coming from, because that's, the first I'd heard of it was yesterday. So I know there's a, you know, somebody's talked about it, but I just, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, are they planning on just taking that property or what? Because the line I saw, they're want to take in front of the Mavericks and then it looked almost like a line completely all the way down the side of our property. So, and that's just not something I ever envisioned there. I thought this was going to be more a tourist destination as opposed to a Walmart, so that's about all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And you know, I'm sure we're getting some of those questions later.
Welcome, Mr. Weldon, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Jason Weldon, I'm a Sparks sergeant, and I'm also a partner in Shields All Sports Incorporated. I'm also the store manager at the location at the Legends Development. And I just wanted to come to let you know that as a company that's a retailer and employer in the development, we are looking forward to the possibility of having a Walmart in the development. Since two thousand and eight when we opened, we've seen every time that a new retailer or restaurant has opened in the development, we've seen an increase in traffic, which generally translates to an increase in sales, which I believe leads to longevity, sustainability, and possible job creation for a lot of the retailers that are in the development now. So we are definitely in favor and hope to see an increase in the traffic and uptick in sales.
Thank you, Jack.
Carol Zoe Miller?
Welcome, Carol.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm one of the neighbors who came to the neighborhood meeting, and it was a good meeting. We are surprised as neighbors, though. I live close enough to the proposed Walmart that I'm sure I'll be able to throw a frisbee from my house to the top of the building. We are surprised that the wall is only six feet. We had the idea that there was going to be an eight-foot wall. I don't know exactly where that came from, but we misunderstood somehow, and we want a taller wall than six feet. So when we consider that it's going to be a twenty-two-foot building, a six-foot wall just doesn't seem adequate for the kind of noise and all that kind of stuff. Like, I can reach over and lift myself up and peek over the wall. I want a taller wall than that. Today I found out that the- Today I found out that, at the Walmart, there's going to be an auto center, and it's going to be the closest corner of the building to our houses. And so, we hadn't anticipated having an auto mechanic with attendant noise and fumes, and I don't know what comes with living next to an auto center, but I'm sure it's worse than living next to a wall where it's enclosed. And so, even more so than earlier today, we want a taller wall than six feet. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. And you live in?
I live on Bay Shore, near the Walmart end.
Carol, real quick, did you go to the neighborhood meeting?
Yes.
And it was not brought up about the auto store there, or the?
I don't recall any auto center being noted anywhere. I hadn't heard of it till today. I was surprised. Maybe it was mentioned and I missed it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Got one more?
Anybody else?
Hold on, got one more. David Dahl?
Thank you, I'm David Dahl, eleven ninety-nine Harper Cove Court, Sparks, Nevada. I come here today with, I started with two hats, and I'm gonna add a third hat at the end in my three minutes. I'm a resident of the neighborhood, and I appreciate the efforts that have been made to, as a resident, I appreciate the efforts that are made to move most of the traffic down Marina Gateway. And so, that's good. But, I'm also in an option to purchase nine acres on the corner of Marina Gateway and Lincoln Avenue. And so, that addresses, that brings up travel issues and access to the property, because widening it to four-lane is going to affect driveway entrances. I'm pleased to say that the Reds Development team has addressed our concerns, and we've suggested some changes in the driveway locations that we believe the, that the staff for Reds has discussed with the city. And so, with that, it looks good to us from that standpoint. So, we're in support of the project. They seem to have fixed most of those issues. And then I have a third hat, and that's as a low-income housing developer. And so, we've, we had testimony here that there's going to be four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of public assistance necessary for the people that are going to work there. Those people already live here. They may already be getting that public assistance. The creation of a job does not create the need for the assistance. It only reduces it. And so, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it, okay.
Mr. Chair, before you close the public hearing, I have a couple of emails to share with the Commission.
Great, thank you.
Make sure we get these on the, on the record. I received an email from Don Young. It reads, "Since I will not be able to attend the Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-first, I appreciate you providing the opportunity for me to meet with you and your engineer on the Walmart project." This email is addressed to Mr. Shanahan, by the way. "Given the plans you presented and the specific details on the manner in which you have addressed potential impacts to our neighborhood, I support the project and would recommend that the PC, Planning Commission, approve it, subject to the conditions of the, conditions of approval, and with due consideration of any relevant issues raised by my neighbors." Second email that I received is, reads, "To whom it may concern, good morning, thank you for taking the time to read this email. I will keep it brief. I know the Sparks Planning Committee is going to look at the proposed, the proposal to build a new Walmart at Legends. Though I am not a very frequent shopper at Walmart, I do not oppose them or feel the vicious hatred I often hear regarding the company. I am, however, opposed to a Walmart at the Legends. The City of Sparks has built something wonderful there. The stores work hard to maintain clean and attractive storefronts. I am very proud of this shopping center. Walmart will detract from the unique appeal of Legends, especially a store of the proposed size. Walmart has certainly has, Walmart certainly has a place in our community, but it does not fit with the theme or feel of the Legends Shopping Complex. I understand I am only one resident, but I felt it was important enough to voice my opinion. I am proud of my city and the work you all do. Thank you for the time and effort you all expend to keep our city growing, thriving, and beautiful. Sincerely, Andrea Petri." And then, third email, which I received about an hour ago. "Dear Mr. Thompson, I had planned to attend tonight's meeting of the Sparks Planning Commission to offer public comment on the possibility of Walmart coming to Legends. I am not able to make the meeting, so I am sending my comments via email in hopes that you will take them into consideration. I am a Sparks resident of fifteen-plus years, raising a family and enjoying living in the area. I was very disappointed to learn yesterday that Walmart wants to open a store at Legends. I think that this would be a huge mistake for our community. Legends has given us something unique in Sparks, and I feel that bringing in Walmart with its poor labor practices and huge carbon footprint will tarnish the image of the area. Additionally, we already have the Walmart three miles away at Spanish Springs. We already have Target at Legends, so don't need another big-box store. And finally, it will have a negative impact on the businesses at Legends. We do not need empty space at Legends due to Walmart running stores out of business, not to mention the traffic congestion that will result. This is a terrible idea. I understand that due to free enterprise, there may not be much that can be done to prevent this disastrous occurrence, but I plead with you, if there is any way to prevent this from happening, that you please make every effort to do so. Please keep Legends a Walmart-free zone. Thank you for your time and consideration." And that's Lisa Guzman.
And it's all you've done, from emails?
That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay, at this point, let's close the public. I guess there's some questions you want, who would like to start?
I'd maybe like to bring up John down here. I know you, you're not going to get away with it tonight, John. John, it was brought up by Brian that he said that there was going to be the traffic on Prater Way, that there's no improvements. Would you?
There are no capacity improvements required in the conditions for mitigation, because Prater Way has available capacity to accommodate the proposed store at Legends.
And the traffic concerns that he had?
I think they've been mitigated with what we've conditioned.
All right, thank you, John.
May I ask a question in the same regard, though? It was suggested, I'm assuming it's the case, that the developers and Walmart, or some combination of those, will pay for the improvements, both on the?
Additional turn lane on Prater and the additional turn lane off McCarran, correct? Those will not be public expense? That is correct. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
About the, can we give a little more detail on the Maverick, in terms of the times that?
Right-hand turn lane that you're proposing at the Maverick? And then, how far, do we have anything, how big that's going to be, what's it going to look like?
Commissioner Fuehens, the, as we sit today, what we know, the traffic volumes will likely require, in fact, I'm convinced they will require, a dedicated right turn to make a southbound turning movement from Prater Way to Marina Gateway, which will require what we call a right-turn slip. Given that, and given the available area, there will be a property take on what is now the corner where the Maverick went in. The details of that, how much, what it looks like, where it sits, we are not that far. The condition, as it sits before you this evening for your consideration, is the widening, the inclusion of the intersection capacity improvements at both ends of Marina Gateway. Upon final design, we'll know those numbers.
More questions? I don't have no more for John. For John? John, maybe I can ask a couple.
Certainly.
Obviously, you and I have talked quite a bit on this thing, and I've concerns about the traffic. Have you worked with RTC and NDOT on this? You know, I want to kind of go through some of that.
Yeah, let's step back a year.
Yes.
I think Mr. Thompson, in his opening remarks, informed the Commission that the original land use proposed in the Legends handbook was for a luxury motor coach, which had extraordinarily low traffic volume generation on a daily or weekend basis. When the applicant Red Development brought forward the proposal for a, a big-box retailer, in this case Walmart, we knew we would see traffic volume increases on that side of the project. As the Commission knows, at this time, we have Lincoln completed with the roundabouts. I think the, Mr. Dahl will recall, as long as, as well as his engineer that's here tonight, Mr. Bedart, when we were doing Marina Gateway eleven years ago?
Right.
The property that's now Legends was held by Mr. Bloom. We had no approved project in there. We contemplated putting Marina Gateway to four lanes with, with the development that went on, which is now called SAD Number Two, or was then called SAD Number Two, which originally built Marina Gateway. So, getting back to your question, we knew there was going to be an impact at that corner of Lincoln and Marina. Because of the traffic volumes that a Walmart brings, on the order of twelve thousand trips a day on, on a weekend, about ten thousand trips a day during the week, weekday, with varying peaks in between, we did, when we sat down with Walmart's traffic engineer, we did include RTC and NDOT. We looked at volumes on the freeways, we looked at volumes on the adjacent arterials. It was very coordinated to set the basis to even start the study, there, all entities were involved. The study took quite a while, and Marina Gateway came out, as well as the other mitigations that Mr. Thompson has included in the staff report, as the major needs to mitigate the potential traffic congestion that the project would cause, could cause.
What percent of the traffic will come in Marina Gateway versus the rest of it? Obviously, it's about four or five different locations.
Yes, there's, there's a lot of access in the area.
Can you explain that a little better?
There are, there are two sides to the story. There's?
Right.
Traffic modeling and the standards of the practice we use. As we scope that out, our transportation manager, John Erickson, worked with the applicant, worked with NDOT, worked with RTC, to arrive at percentages of where the traffic will come from. In the traffic study, I believe the numbers came out at about forty-three percent of the total traffic will use Marina Gateway, and it varies a little bit between weekends and weekdays. On a practical side, Marina Gateway is the front door to this project. People will drive the easiest path they can. So, given both sides, what the technical study showed us, what we know in practice from handling traffic every day here in the City of Sparks, the need for four lanes became very clear.
Right, and essentially, forty percent will come in through that?
Forty percent is the technical basis. Being the city engineer and watching how things have worked in here, I would not be surprised if more, particularly in the beginning of the project, will use Marina Gateway. It will be the front door to the project.
Okay, and then, again, let's get back to the same question on, on Prater, and the volumes on Prater, and can that take that additional forty percent is what, really, the question I have?
Absolutely, yes, the, the study clearly cleared it, and we, we currently now have signalized four-lane, regional road, actually, four-lane arterial in, in the form of Prater Way. And it has available capacity.
More questions with John? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. More questions you want to get, other subjects?
Well, the applicant, there are a couple of questions that need to be addressed by
This is again, name and?
Gary Shanahan with Red Development.
Hi, I'm Nick Veranca. Thank you for having me here. I'm the store manager out in Spanish Springs Walmart. Some of the things that were brought up were the deliveries.
Right.
Our trucks, I'm one of the busier Walmarts in the area. I average three to five trucks a day. And we have the same stipulations as what you're talking about here, to where I can't take a delivery before 7:00 a.m., and I don't take a delivery after 10:00 p.m. We also have a good neighbor program, so along the side of my store is a housing development right next door. So, if they ever complain or anything, those complaints go to me, and I address them.
Okay, could I ask again, which store again, maybe I was?
Spanish Springs.
The Spanish Springs?
The closest one to this one.
In the Spanish Springs?
It's on the Pyramid House.
On which side?
Okay.
No, I drove around there. Which side are housing on that?
If you're facing my store, they're on the right-hand side.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the housing development's on the right, our parking lot is, there's a fence in between us and them.
Okay.
And believe me, I have a few neighbors that let me know if any things arrive, and I address them immediately and take care of any of their concerns.
So, so you would suggest, based on your store being a fairly busy store, that three to five trucks is a?
This particular store's going to be, square footage-wise, is going to be a little bit smaller than mine, so I think, I don't think they'll have any more than that, that I'll still be one of the busier stores? If that answers your question.
It does, and just since we've been talking about traffic, that actually sort of surprises me in terms of the, how small that number is. I would anticipate more trucks, honestly. But, where would, maybe this is not a question for you necessarily, but where are those trucks likely to come from and get to the facility? In what manner would they be most likely to?
I have some trucks that come out of our facility out towards Fernley. Those are all of our grocery trucks, and produce and meat. And then I have some trucks that come out of our facility out past Susan.
No, I guess my question was in that, in that we've been talking about Marina Gateway, and, and what would be the traffic pattern? What would be the traffic pattern for the trucks?
From the way Nick described that, I would imagine that the trucks would probably come in Interstate Eighty and turn north on Sparks Boulevard and into the project, probably from Lincoln?
Right, they would follow the, whatever pattern you deem, that's what our drivers will follow. Because I believe the way I've been listening to this, they're going to come in and not go right in the middle of the project. They're going to come in off of, by the, what store is that on the corner? I'm not sure. Maverick? They're going to come in from that direction.
You're saying they will come in Marina Gateway as well, then?
Right.
Let's, yeah, let's again say, are they going to come down Marina Gateway, Prater Gateway, or are they going to be on, on Lincoln?
Those are two questions, right? This is the interstate here, in the project. So, the question is, will the truck drivers come in the interstate up Sparks Boulevard and use Lincoln to come in the back of the property? Or do you see them coming from the north, using Prater to come down there and go to the freeway?
They'll come, the ones from there will probably come up there.
Come in right there?
Yeah, they'll come up Sparks Boulevard, and then left on Prater, and then from Prater. That's the way I think they're doing it.
Okay. So, he's, he's suggesting that the trucks would probably come all the way up Sparks Boulevard, over Prater, and then down Marina Gateway. I think it's quite possible that the trucks would actually turn left on Lincoln, because that would be a more direct and shorter route, and come through the roundabouts, and then come south along Windsurfer. So, but I?
Again, if you, if, how, if the city said, hey, we want you to do it this way, we would follow whatever way you want us to take them. That's how they do it at my store, too, because of that housing development. We make sure we're a good neighbor when we come in one way and exit another way, so that in the early morning, my trucks are nowhere near it. They, they go to the left towards Coles and come in from that direction until later on in the evening.
George, three to five deliveries, how long does it take to unload a truck?
The trucks that we get that are more general merchandise, that are coming the longest, those take us about an hour and a half to two hours.
So?
Yeah, they, they drop and hook, so that there's not a truck idling like we've stated. So, they drop it and they leave. The, the cab leaves.
Okay.
So, and then the next time they come, they drop and pick up the empty one, or the one we load with pallets. So, there's never, the truck is gone in as long as it takes to back in, get us to sign off, and then they're back out of there.
So, three to five a day, approximately, understanding, these stores?
So, three to five a day, approximately, understanding this store's approximate size? So, starting at seven, and the last one potentially could be right up against nine o'clock for the unloading?
Yeah, the, um, we, we never go past the, the cab trucks usually out of there before nine o'clock. That way, we're not cluttering it that close to the deadline of ten o'clock.
Okay.
Chairman Spurbrad, I'd also add that there are a total of four truck seals available, so that a trailer sitting in one dock does not preclude additional seals being used for simultaneous delivery.
And I'm just curious about that Lincoln approach, because I've done that myself, taking a little stroll around the Marina, that's, that can be a pretty busy walkway for people who wanna take a walk, and it catches you pretty quick. That, that could be a, a hard intersection to negotiate if you came back on Lincoln.
Right, I, that's, that's why I said, whatever way the city feels would be the safest, and the route our trucks need to take, that's easily communicated to our drivers of what they need to do.
I have a question about the auto center. Having worked at a gas station, they, they can get noisy. Is there any chance, you know, we use air hoses, this, that, and whatever, taking wheels off?
I can answer a little bit on that. I, I don't have what we call a TLE. It's with traffic, Tire and Lube and Express.
Gotcha.
But our policies are, they're, we have bay doors for that. Once the car goes in, they shut the doors.
They shut, okay.
Right, so that also is a noise deterrent.
And I saw, what, four bays or something you're gonna have in there?
Three bays.
Three bays? Would you like to speak?
And are you gonna be doing auto serviceings in late at night? Would you?
Yes. Can you give your name?
Good evening, my name is Shad Vermish, I'm with BRR Architecture, the architect for a project. There are three bay doors, and, as he mentioned, they would typically open the doors, pull the car in, shut the doors, and then do the service. It's a TLE, Tire and Lube Express, so they're only doing oil changes and tires. They're not doing any other types of automotive service within there.
It's really running an air gun to change tires and
Generally, yes, they would be with the doors closed.
Okay.
Okay, and you could see some of the questions that we had
Sure.
earlier were the noise of the rattling and, you know, putting the tires on. You're an architect, right? And what's the, the sound, and, you know, with, are you reducing the sound enough to where these houses are? What's your feeling on there, your professional opinion?
With the doors closed and the, and the screen walls that we have, your typical decibel levels, I'm not saying that you wouldn't ever hear anything, but with all the background residual noise, it's not going to be a prevalent noise above and beyond what, what's, what you would typically hear throughout the day. You know, you've got traffic background noises and other things, kind of all happening as well.
It still won't go above what you're saying is the natural
Correct.
How many hours of operation?
Yeah, the hours of operation also, they've not been determined yet, operations hasn't, they'll, they'll take a look at it and see what the potential use, how often to be used, and determine that eventually, but from some of the other stores in the area, they operate during the week from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then on the weekends, I think eight to six, or something like that. So that, we would anticipate that that would, would be something similar here.
Yeah, and I can't remember, we're have to ask from city staff if there's some limit on the timing they're doing that, obviously.
Any more, George?
Yeah. I forgot what noise, I have just a question on the, the aesthetics of the wall, which can at times become the wall buffer? Is there, is there anything aesthetically that could be done to juice up that wall to make it
Exactly, our civil engineer, yeah, our, our intention, and Frank, you can speak to this if you'd like, we'll
At the same time that you're addressing that, the concerns that Ms. Miller had on the
The height.
The height of the wall in the, in the south section there.
Certainly.
Can you help us out to understand what she's saying versus what your plans are?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
The screen wall, between the edge of the street and the wall itself, there's a landscape buffer. It predominantly is about 10 feet wide, but it, there are sections of it where it gets wider than that. What we propose to do is to landscape that, to soften the wall, and the wall would be probably very similar to what was there, would replace it with something of similar character, and then landscape up against it. We have talked about using different types of planning materials to discourage anybody from climbing on the wall. Pyracantha is a subject that was mentioned, and it seems to be a favorite. Relative to the height of the wall, what I would suggest is, you know, we're, we're certainly open to the neighborhood's concerns. I'm a bit concerned that if you put an eight-foot wall on top of an eight-foot retaining wall, that gets to be a pretty significant vertical mass. I think that I'd be happy to work with staff and the specific neighbors to work in that area, and, you know, maybe a portion of the wall was eight feet, but what I'd like to do is to work on it with staff and to come up with a design with input that accommodates everybody's concerns. If the condition is an eight-foot wall, we'd do that. I don't think that aesthetically, that's gonna be what everybody's gonna want in long term. It's one of those things that you, you ask for, we're happy to accommodate, but I think that aesthetically, it might not be what you want when it's installed. So, what I'd say is, let us and the residents and staff have a little flexibility on that, and we'll make the commitment, if that wall needs to be eight feet, to accommodate those concerns, that's what we'll do.
Well, plain old drab walls can be unsightly, but they can be artistically, you know, articulated with, with some design.
We agree.
I realize you wanna buffer the noise, too, so
Right.
Was it any idea?
Let's just reiterate again, in the cross-section A
Great, let's go through.
One, that's the one that I think that mostly the residents is, are dealing with. I just want to, you know, just to show how large the wall is at that place. I think that's what Ms. Miller meant it was.
And give, give your name and
Frank Beedart, Odyssey Engineering, Vice President. Basically, what, what we're looking at here is, we have a 10-foot storage, enclosed storage right here. The eight-foot wall, we're gonna have to work with staff with the location of this.
Sure.
But an eight-foot wall, or, or a six-foot wall, it's gonna make no difference on this landscape buffer area within it, because the, because the storage area behind is actually gonna be a little bit higher. You know, we, we believe, or I believe myself, that the landscaping's gonna be nicer to look at than, than an eight-foot wall. So it's something we're gonna have to work with staff as we go along in the neighborhood.
And I guess the word wall, there's, there can be two walls. You're talking at the top of the retaining wall, and then we're talking down towards the street.
Right, screen fence.
And, and I guess the question was, down at the street area, or if you don't mind, uh
Well, do you have the site plan?
Yeah, I do.
Down the site plan that shows
We can go back.
And zoom in.
Tim, can we zoom in on this?
Hopefully. I can get in this area right quick. So we can see this.
Try the plus.
Have a full size, Frank, or they could just lay on the videos.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough, too.
Okay. Okay, so, we've got two cross-sections showing. A was shown here, which kind of comes to the center of this residence towards the Autumn Buddhist Center, and then B is back here from the parking lot, kind of to the building. This dark line right here is the retaining wall. So it starts just north of where we show here on the page, and it comes down, and as it gets into this area right here, it's about, that's where we're at the eight-foot dimension, Frank.
Correct.
So, just inside this line, there'll be the screen wall. So at this area here, you'll have this lower landscape area, an eight-foot retaining wall, and then just inside that retaining wall will be the six, to eight-foot screen wall. So this is also kind of right at the culmination of this drive. Aesthetically, you know, I want to accommodate the neighborhood's concerns. Aesthetically, I think, you know, an interesting idea might to be to explore the landscaping in this area, and some vertical evergreens, and some of those types of things, against those combined wall surfaces, and to give you kind of the screening that I think that you would want, would be accomplished. But if it's not acceptable, and eight-foot wall's perfectly acceptable to us to build, and we'll be happy to do that, and whether it's here, or maybe the wall is different elevations, it's in different places, and shows some undulation, we're open to that as well.
Now, I was just thinking, you know, the Walmart third second street, I just noticed the other day
I've been down in Glendale, how nice alongside the freeway was, there's mounds and all, and it really added some nice sight dimension, even, you know, a mound and a little pyramid on a, you know, just some little artistic work made that, you know, softened the visual impact of, you know, the abutment against the freeway wall, so.
We'll investigate that.
Yeah, as you approach it, it cuts you off. No questions on that one?
Just to reiterate that, that moving forward with staff and neighbors, that you're willing to, to make adjustments if, if that ends up being something that's
Absolutely.
more acceptable to them.
Yeah, if the outcome is an eight-foot wall, and that's what satisfies them, that's acceptable to us.
I, I, I think I understand your, your point of view with a, with a smaller wall and more adequate landscaping is probably a, a better answer if it were me, but that's not, I don't live there.
Right.
So.
Again, Section A is only where that enclosure is, or whatever we call it, right? And that goes how far? So Section A is only for a short period right there, right?
Yeah.
And then, and then after, right after Section A, does it just open up there?
Right after, between Section A and Section B, as you go north there, and you get the south side of the street, that wall turns, and it kind of opens up a flat area behind the curb. We're kind of hoping to have the ability to use that as landscaping, because basically, you're gonna be looking at an eight-foot wall with a six-foot screen wall on top, it's 14 feet of, there I am. At least having that ability to have someplace to landscape and put some trees, put some shrubbery, you know, you're not looking at a 14-foot wall. And if you look at, if you actually drive down Windsurfer, there is some landscaping on the other side, it, it does look nice, and it does kind of hide that, and screen that wall that exists there, the other side of the street now, against the apartments.
One question for me. No, I just, Odyssey and Walmart, I mean, they, they seem to be willing to work with staff and the neighbors, and, you know, I have no qualms about making a motion whenever anybody's ready. George, again, then, on that side, on the east side, will there be a sidewalk, or on the lower, the sidewalk will be on the west side of that Windsurf?
There's an existing sidewalk on the west side of Windsurf, right? And we've been working with staff to try and narrow that street. Well, we don't want, want that street to turn into as a parking lot. We don't want people parking within it, and I don't think the residents really want it either. So we're trying to narrow it up and work with staff and with fire to eliminate, to make it narrow so people won't park there. And then
Right.
when I was doing that, I eliminated that sidewalk on the east side of Windsurf. There's a sidewalk existing on the west side now, with the nice landscaping along there between there and the screen wall.
Right.
And there's really no place to go on that west side unless
Right.
you run into a truck dock.
Exactly. Yeah. Windsurf, the apartments to the west, are, are they gonna get their share of noise? What are we doing?
Um
As I look at this access road, the, on the west is the existing Marina Village Apartments, so presumably, they're gonna, they're gonna catch a lot of that
Three to four trucks a day.
Yeah, the three to four trucks a day.
Put up this
Did I do that right? Kept me out of the infantry in Vietnam, I'm sorry. Can't read them out too well. The access down Windsurf.
This is Windsurf Drive.
Yes, and to the, to the west, to the left, is the existing Marina Village Apartments.
Correct.
So they're gonna catch some of that noise when the trucks come through.
They are gonna catch some
Any plans?
The nice part out there, if you've noticed, if you walked down Windsurf.
Haven't done that.
Um, we actually, I worked with that project with Mr. David Dahl. We have enclosed garages to kind of help that between, buffer in between those apartments and Windsurf Drive, all except maybe that northernmost apartment. But for the most part, if you look, this is the apartment closest to the actual physical store. It's 180 feet from the store. This portion, I did this, where I actually did this cross-section, trucks actually are not gonna be on Windsurf at this location, they're actually gonna be behind the screen wall, between the building and that screen wall, entering the site.
So that wall would buffer some of that noise, is what the plan is. Walls attract graffiti, huh? Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Only in bad neighborhoods, and that's a good neighborhood. I saw a firefighter removing graffiti from the, from the fire department on East Fourth Street yesterday, on the pole. Other questions? No? Ready to make a motion, then? Somebody wanna make a motion? So tough. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I moved approved special use permit associated with PCN 12035 to allow for the construction of a 180,000 square foot big box retail building, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 37 as listed in the staff report.
The second?
A second.
All right, I have first and second. Any other questions, comments? All right.
I'm, I'm going, I'd just like to make a comment, because there's been several statements made here today in terms of what was anticipated eight or 10 or 12 years ago, in terms of this project, and I, I think I share the feelings of a lot of people, that in some ways, it's, it's a different project, but for those of us who went through 2008 and '09, it's also a different world.
Yeah.
So I intend to support this project.
Anybody else wanna make some comments? All right, well, it's, long enough, let's call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose?
Nay. I just cannot make the finds in S1 to highlight that Sparks Marina's original destination is, was found in the report.
All right, thank you. All right, project approved, thank you, everybody. All right, um, yeah, give me a few minutes here.
That, as finding S1, S1 is saying, Marina's
Yes.
As a regional
Yes, before, all right, um, public comment? Would anybody else like to speak before close out?
As a regional recreation destination.
I guess not. Okay.
Right, or goal three ones.
You wanna get that in while
Highlight Sparks Marina's a regional recreation destination.
Then we'll wait a second.
I don't think I
Sure, it's public comment. Again, give your
My name is Bill Humpy.
I don't.
And one of the reasons that I came here this evening
Yeah.
Sit down. Is that there's a great deal of concern about people making adequate wages, being able to support their families, and that type of thing. There have been a number of studies done, I really wish I could have introduced them, but what they have shown that, in the last 15 years, Walmart has been one of the primary drivers in the 15 years, Walmart has been one of the primary drivers in the reduction of wages. Now, I've lived in this town since 1968, and I actually grew up in Hawthorne. And one of the things that I experienced in the '60s, '70s, '80s, even the mid-'90s, is that I could go out and find a job if I had to. That job's going to pay decent wages, I was going to get decent benefits, and I was going to be able to support my family. That's not happening today. And one of the problems is, you know, if you drive by Legends, what you're going to see is a large number of people that are working in those buildings, they're working part-time hours, and they're working minimum wages. Some of them are trying to support families. And they're not making enough money to do that, so they end up paying or applying for food stamps, housing allowances, and things like that. Unemployment right now is 7.4%. That was the figure last month. That's not the truth. It's closer to 12, because there are not a lot of people that have just given up looking for work. And then when they do find work, it's part-time, it's minimum wage, they end up working two or three jobs, trying to support their families. And these, you know, these are people, a lot of them professionals, and it, and it, and it doesn't happen. The reason to oppose Walmart is, or actually, any other big box store, is try at least make them start paying a living wage and providing decent benefits for their employees. And that's the reason. That's, that was my whole purpose in being here this evening. Personally, I don't care whether Walmart builds down there or not. I don't go to Walmart. My family doesn't go to Walmart. Ninety percent of the people I know don't go to Walmart for that very simple reason. They're not a responsible citizen. And they know it, they fight it, their ads are aimed at it.
Thank you very much. All right, next item, comments from commissioners. Anybody like to speak at this point? Seems not. You kind of lost your voice. Okay, move for adjournment?
Move to adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.